A singer in a smoking room. I smell the wine and cheap perfume. For a smile they can share the night. It goes on and on and on and on. Strangers waiting. Up and down the boulevard. Their shadows searching in the night. Streetlights people. They must find emotion hiding somewhere in the night. Working hard to get my fill. Everybody wants a thrill. Paying anything to roll the dice just one more time. Some will win, some will lose. Some are born to sing the blues. Well, the movie never ends. It goes on and on and on and on. Strangers waiting. Up and down the boulevard. Their shadows searching in the night. Streetlights people. Don't stop believing. Hold on to that feeling. Don't stop believing. Hold on. Don't stop believing. Hold on to that feeling. Come out Virginia, don't let me wait. Your Catholic girls start much too late. Ah, but sooner or later it comes down to fate. I might as well be the one. Where they show you a statue, told you to pray. They built you temper and locked you away. Ah, but they never told you the price that you pay. The things that you might have done. Only the good die young. That's what I said. Only the good die young. Only the good die young. You might have heard I run with the dangerous crowd. We ain't too pretty, we ain't too proud. We might be laughing a bit too loud. Ah, but I'd never hurt no one. So come on Virginia, show me a sign. Send up a signal, I'll throw you a line. Stained glass curtain you're hiding behind. Never lets in the sun. Darling, only the good die young. Whoa, 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 whoa. I tell you, only the good die young. Only the good die young. You got a nice white dress and a party on your confirmation. You've got a brand new soul. Mm, and a cross so gold. But Virginia, they didn't give you quite enough information. You didn't count on me. Were you counting on your rosary? Oh, whoa, whoa. They say there's a heaven for those who wait. And some say it's better, but I say it ain't. I'd rather laugh with the sinners than cry with the saints. Yeah, sinners are much more fun. You know that only the good die young. Oh, baby. I tell you, only the good die young. Said your mother totally, all I could give you was a reputation. Oh, she never cared for me. Did she ever say a prayer for me? Oh, whoa, whoa. Come out, come out, come out. Virginia, don't let me wait. Your Catholic girls start much too late. Sooner or later it comes down to fate. I might as well be the one. You know that only the good die young. Tell you, baby. You know that only the good die young. Only the good die young. Only the good. Only the good die young.
Well, good afternoon. We're now back from closed session and would like to go ahead and please have the clerk call the road to establish a presence off a quorum.
Supervisor Abe Koga?
Here.
Supervisor Jung?
Here.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
I'm here.
Vice President Arenas?
Here.
President Lee?
Still present. Good afternoon. And next we have our pledge of allegiance. Supervisor Abe Koga, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so next is the item number seven, which is adoption of the commendations and proclamations. Can I have a motion to approve and adopt item seven?
Motion to approve, but I'm also requesting an item seven B commendation for the consul Henneral of Mexico, only to be adopted only due to the unavailability of the consul.
Oh, second, actually I had a request as well for item three. The recipient is ill and so not able to attend today, so if we could adopt the commendation and present at a different time, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
So it's for the, we are still adopting both commendations today, we're just not presenting. All right, so does motion and seconded. All right, let's see, let's go take a row.
Supervisor Abe Koga?
Aye.
Supervisor Jung?
Yes.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
Yes.
Vice President Arenas?
Yes.
President Lee?
Aye, as well.
Thank you, that carries with five.
Okay, thank you. Moving to item eight, which is presenting the proclamation and commendation. First item we have is for the Multi-Agency Assessment Center for Supporting Incarcerated Youth by Facilitating Intervention and Providing Treatment Services as Juvenile Hall by Vice President Arenas.
Because that's how we get it done at the county. Come on in, come on back, everyone, please. Thank you so much. We are easy to pivot. We do that for security reasons. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sylvia Arenas. I represent District One, which is a portion of the East Side, Evergreen, South San Jose, Morgan Hill, San Martín, and Gilroy. And today, I'm really honored to have a group of really incredible people that need, actually, they deserve this kind of acknowledgement as they work with some of our most vulnerable populations. This is our juvenile justice-involved youth. And with me today is the Multi-Agency Assessment Center, known as MAC, and of course Loving Flowers. So you know what, let's raise, can you raise your hand, those who are involved in the MAC, who represent the MAC team? This is the Multi-Agency Assessment Center. This is a team that does, makes things happen over at our juvenile hall for a lot of our youth. And I'll tell you a little bit more about all of what they do. And then along with them is Megan Two and her team, Megan Two Williams of Loving Flowers Group. And so they do part of the work that gets done with some of our, with some of our youth. And I'll tell you all about it, I promise. I'll tell you all about it. So first of all, I want to thank Deputy Chief Joe Ugali and Daniel Cortez, Division Manager of the Multi-Agency Assessment Center, that I will be lovingly calling MAC. And all of the MAC team that supports our youth in juvenile hall each and every day. Like I said, we also have Megan Two, who has dedicated her life to this county's youth who are incarcerated. And so what she does is she hosts these really special flower arrangement days where she brings in flowers and the youth get a chance to put something together for their family members. When they visit, they have something to offer. And usually it's around the holidays. And so what Megan has started to do is to add some very special essays. And she does a bit of a competition on the essay writing because, you know, we like prizes and so do our youth, our youth in juvenile hall also like this. And we have heard so many wonderful essays on behalf of our youth that exemplify the courage to continue to persevere irregardless of a lot of just challenging issues that they have encountered throughout their very young life. And so one of the things that she does, that Megan Two does, is bring our youth together by doing some of these flower arrangements and then the essay writing. And then, of course, the MAC team does their work on an everyday basis, supporting our youth in our juvenile justice system. And this is, this is something, some of the really amazing work that the county does that we don't really talk about every day. It's part of the county's probation department. And this team provides early intervention and treatment services to our youth that are entering the system for the very first time. So from trauma responsive care to substance abuse and anger management education, the MAC team provides rehabilitative support. And most importantly, they inspire hope. And they really give our youth an opportunity to dream once again and to aspire to those dreams. And it's something really different to see how you've done that through, through all of the relationship building, because that's really at the center of it, is when our youth feels safe and they trust somebody, they're allowed to continue to dream and aspire. And so this is, this is a result of all of this really good work that you put in on an everyday basis. And so I want to thank the MAC team for their direct intervention in our youth's lives to provide all of these alternative pathways. But like I said, this opportunity to dream is something that, it's not on a job description, but I can certainly see it each and every time that I go visit. And that is the magic of this MAC team. So please help me just recognize that by giving them a big round of applause. Now, along with that is their relationship, like I said, it's all about relationships and their relationship with Loving Flowers Group. And this group comes in with their unwavering belief in our youth and their love for our youth. And like I said, they've supported our justice-involved youth with flower arrangements during their visitations. And throughout the years, I've seen Megan do this through this group called Loving Flowers Group. And what she has done for our youth is also given opportunity to tell their story and to think about during very special holidays, so say, for example, during Thanksgiving, what you are grateful for. And one of those, last year I got a chance to listen to some of those survey, to some of those essays. And you would think that youth who are incarcerated may not be too grateful for the situation that they're in. But it is part of what the MAC team does is to elevate where the youth are irregardless, you know, they happen to be in juvenile hall. But they are also thinking about how did they get there and what are they going to do once they leave? And I was very highly impressed with essays that showed that, and appreciated on behalf of the youth, all of their challenges that they encountered throughout their life that led them to the point where they are at that present day. And it takes a certain kind of individual to be able to do that, to appreciate challenges and to continue to have gratitude in their lives irregardless. And so I want to thank them as well for having this relationship with Loving Flowers and for Megan, for your leadership. And Megan, you've had to be a warrior for our youth and a true advocate. And irregardless of your own medical issues, you've continued to serve our community. And I also think that that takes a very special person that is selfless and is centered in love for our community and especially for our youth. So please help me recognize Megan Two and Loving Flowers. Really, the reality is clear. We must do more to prevent incarcerated youth, especially our black and brown youth, from entering the justice system. But once they're there, I want to make sure that you all know that there's amazing people supporting them. And that means that they're investing in trauma responsive care, supporting our community partners like Loving Flowers. We must all do our parts to ensure that every youth has a fighting chance for a better life. And I can't say enough, I know that you've already heard me talk about the MAC team, the smile that it puts on my face, based on their extraordinary performance and dedication to break the cycle of school-to-prison pipeline and to continue to support our youth irregardless. So I want to present, Daniel and the chief, of course, this commendation and certificates to recognize your tireless efforts. This is on behalf of all of our board. And if you could step forward so I can present it. Yes, please. Thank you. And then, of course, in the loving way that Megan Two does work, she's the one who's brought in all of these flowers to recognize the MAC team. Yes, and the team will help distribute these. And then we also have certificates of recognition for each of those members that are standing with me. And I'd like to ask my board members if they can come down so that we can take a picture together and apologize. Our back will be to you for a quick minute while we do this. Thank you. Congratulations. What a beautiful ceremony idea. And I apologize, Chief Pritchard here. I'm so sorry. I must be blind because I didn't see you in the audience. I apologize. Chief Pritchard is the head of our probation department and also through his leadership is producing the kind of folks that support our youth and carry out these very special programs. And so I wanted to also thank you. Please help me acknowledge the chief.
Over the years, he served in a variety of roles, from forensic analysis to purchasing, analytics, and management, ultimately rising to Chief Fiscal Officer at SSA. In each of these roles, he brought expertise, integrity, and innovation. He oversaw the administration of over $1.2 billion in public and agency funds, handled with unwavering precision and care. His leadership made operations transparent, compliant, and aligned with SSA's mission. Joining SSA in 2000, Daniel's fingerprints are on some of the most critical systems in the agency. He was instrumental in implementing SAP software, leading Cal-Win reporting operations, and pioneering the development of the e-time study application. But Daniel's work extended far beyond systems and numbers. In 2018, he was honored with the Employee Excellence Award, reflective of his work excellence. What set Daniel apart was not just what he did, but how he did it. In moments of fiscal uncertainty, he brought studiness. In times of challenge, he led with foresight. And in the everyday, he was a solutions-oriented thinker. Daniel, may this next season bring you joy and adventure. We're grateful for your contributions. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. And I believe your wife is here?
No, she didn't.
Okay. Well, congratulations and sort of a big round of applause.
Just want to say thank you to the whole SSA team and to everybody else who's really made difference over the years. And I'm sure you guys will do great without me.
If I can invite the board to come join me for a photo? And we have our monthly Employee Excellence Award recipients for August. So you know who you are, please come on up and sit in the chairs to my right and left. Today, we get an opportunity to thank and honor just a handful of our exceptional employees across the county organization. We're going to hear about folks from the Clerk of the Board, Library District, District Attorney's Office, Technology Services and Solutions, Sheriff's Office, Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency, Social Services Agency, and Santa Clara Valley Healthcare. So the way this works is, I'll call you up one at a time, read a lovely blurb about you from your department, then you'll step behind and President Lee will present you with your certificate, take a photo, and at the end, we'll do a group photo with all of you and the entire board. All right? So first up, Cynthia Murray. For the past five years, Cynthia has been an integral part of the Clerk of the Board's office, serving as a board clerk too. She brings a calm, thoughtful approach to every task. And while she doesn't seek out recognition, her influence is felt through her many contributions. Cynthia is known for her reliability, professionalism, and ability to adapt to whatever the day brings. She particularly excels at training the commission's team. She's organized and excels at spotting gaps in areas of improvement and suggesting practical ways to make things better. She approaches her work with logic, optimism, and an eye on the big picture. Her teammates appreciate that she asks intelligent questions, shares useful insights, and steps in wherever needed. Cynthia brings calm energy to the office, always focused, respectful, and ready to help with any task, big or small. Congratulations. Juan Guzman. Juan is a library assistant at the Gilroy Library who brings professionalism and dedication to the job with genuine compassion for the people he serves. Patrons frequently praise Juan for his kindness and helpfulness in routine matters such as reference questions or helping someone navigate resources. But Juan really shines when given the chance to go above and beyond. Recently, a visitor to the library was experiencing a mental health crisis, and Juan stepped up to offer quiet support and stability while staff arranged for proper care to best help the patron. It's his people skills and demeanor in situations like these that really show Juan's dedication to serving not just patrons' informational asks, but their emotional needs as well. Juan's bilingual skills and deep cultural awareness play a vital role in serving Gilroy's large Spanish-speaking community. He's part of the library's racial equity team, where he helps develop engaging events that reflect the diverse interests of the community. But Juan doesn't toot his own horn, except when the talented musician brings out his trumpet to play melodies in the parking lot during a break. How can we bring that today? Staff and patrons love it. The pleasant interludes are just another way he contributes to a joyful and vibrant library atmosphere. Congratulations and thank you. We have two folks who are unable to join us, but I'm going to read their write-up very briefly. Diana Orozco. Since joining the crime lab in 2018, Diana has brought energy, precision, and a deep sense of purpose to her work. She started in the Controlled Substances Unit and then transitioned to the Forensic Biology Unit in 2022, where she performs complex forensic DNA analysis. She's a trusted member of the Crime Science Team, often applying her expertise directly in the field. Diana often manages some of the lab's most sensitive and complex cases. Her keen eye for detail and thoughtful approach stand out, especially under pressure. Whether she's interpreting DNA results or troubleshooting software systems as a super user, Diana brings consistency, technical expertise, and a drive to improve. She faces every challenge with professionalism and a positive attitude that uplifts those around her. Outside of her work, Diana enjoys running, participating in Ironman triathlons and Spartan races, coaching her high school track and cross-country teams, hiking with her dog, and traveling the world. Congratulations to her. And also unable to attend this afternoon, Chris Nguyen. Chris is a Business Systems Analyst in the Technology Services and Solutions Department. Known for being dependable, solution-oriented, and collaborative, Chris plays a critical role in supporting the county's PeopleSoft ERP system and the Employee Services Agency. Chris promotes innovation and looks to improve processes. On the PeopleSoft team, he helped onboard 1,100 county employees under a tight deadline. To expedite the process, he developed a SharePoint database, created dashboards, and ensured accurate data entry. Chris actively promotes innovation and process improvement with notable projects including e-pay and the Cash Out app. His focus on reducing manual work has led to increased efficiency and accuracy for the Employee Services Agency. A strong communicator and team player, Chris fosters a culture of mutual respect, continuous improvement, and knowledge sharing. He welcomes feedback, encourages discussion, and invests in professional growth, which helps team morale and improves services. Congratulations to Chris. We have Daniel Yamas. Daniel has been with the Sheriff's Office since 2018 and currently serves as the Coordinator for the Concealed Carry Weapons Program. He is known for his strong work ethic, attention to detail, and a can-do attitude, making him the go-to person when challenges arise. Daniel has introduced thoughtful enhancements and suggestions that have made the CCW process more efficient and accessible. He helped implement a new online software system to manage electronic applications, coordinated with other county departments, and worked with the vendor to mitigate problems. The new technology significantly improved workflow and turnaround times. With a customer-service-oriented mindset, Daniel routinely interacts with community members, demonstrating his patience, professionalism, and commitment. His ability to focus on the details while keeping the bigger picture in mind has elevated the entire unit. And his dedication has led to long-term improvements. In all his work, Daniel demonstrates professionalism and his commitment to the mission of the Sheriff's Office and the county. Thank you for your service. James Elliott McIntosh. As a senior biologist and standards specialist in the weights and measures division, Elliott's influence over the past nine years has been profound. Elliott saw the opportunity for the county to lead in the electric vehicle charging sphere. He advocated for the county to borrow the state's testing equipment to demonstrate how the county can ensure accuracy of EV chargers. In 2024, Elliott led the weights and measures division to establish an electric vehicle supply equipment program to ensure accuracy and compliance of the EV chargers to protect consumers. Although they had limited capacity from the borrowed equipment, the team has tested over 200 devices. In 2025, after the legislature passed Assembly Bill 2037, which authorized county inspections and fees for public EV chargers, Elliott was prepared. Through his advocacy, the county will be purchasing its own EV charger testing equipment, making it one of only two counties in the state to do so. Elliott is guided by strong belief in protecting the economic health of consumers. A dedicated husband and father of five, Elliott's legacy is built on quiet conviction, thoughtful leadership, and meaningful change. Well done. Pedro Hernandez. Pedro has been with the county for 24 years and is highly respected for his professionalism, expertise, and his willingness to help colleagues. As a senior accountant for the Senior Nutrition Program in the Department of Aging and Adult Services, Pedro uses his vast knowledge of accounting principles to ensure successful annual audits. He approaches each task with a positive attitude and focus on service. Whether he's preparing audit responses, reconciling budgets, or helping forecast future expenditures, Pedro does so with precision and reliability. His contributions not only support program operations, but also reflect a deep commitment to public accountability and stewardship of resources. Recently, Pedro showed initiative to support a teammate helping to assess complex financial projections during a critical planning period. His strong work ethic, leadership, and humility make him a role model and mentor in the department. Pedro is a husband and father of three. When he's not supporting his team at the county, he enjoys running and reading. Congratulations. Catherine is an ambulatory services manager with Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, who has demonstrated outstanding leadership, integrity, and longstanding dedication to improving patient care in the primary care division. Catherine has been with the county for 15 years, nine of those with SCVH, and in that time, she has built a strong, respected reputation grounded in collaboration, professionalism, and results. She's been involved in numerous crucial initiatives that span diverse areas of care. Catherine has contributed to flu, COVID, and RSV response efforts, the implementation of retinal AI cameras for diabetic eye exams, and supported the Primary Care Behavioral Health Program. Most notably, she was involved in the development and successful launch of the Triage and Advice in Primary Care Team, which enables patients to connect directly with clinicians via phone and text. This innovative program prevents unnecessary trips to the emergency department while significantly reducing wait times for clients. Catherine's work is a clear reflection of her commitment to high-quality, equitable health care. She brings people together, leads with integrity, and consistently drives meaningful improvements that benefit patients and staff. Thank you for your service. Veen Nguyen. Veen Nguyen is a senior management analyst who embodies unwavering dedication and an exceptional work ethic in her foundational role of building the Behavioral Health Service Department's Financial Planning and Budget Oversight Team. Vee was key in developing the vital workflows for the team, which in turn ensure stability, compliance, and operational efficiency. A dedicated employee, she ensures payroll accuracy and timely processing. And that's crucial not only to meeting fiscal deadlines, but also supporting the morale of her colleagues. Vee's fiscal prudence led to the development of a timekeeping process that enables the department to better track activities reimbursable through Medi-Cal, thus maximizing recoverable federal funds. Throughout her time with Behavioral Health, she has worn multiple hats, supported cross-functional teams, and stabilized essential processes. Always the first to step up when new challenges arise, she brings a calm, solutions-focused mindset to every task. Quietly effective and widely respected, Vee is a role model whose contributions reflect the highest standards of public service. Congratulations. We have a big round of applause for all of our award recipients. Invite the board to come join me. We're going to turn our backs and take a quick group photo.
It really does.
Let's go in adjourned until 9:30 in the morning, same place, same channel. Thank you very much.
Let's go ahead and adjourn until 9:30 in the morning, same place, same channel. Thank you very much.[1766.83]